Hi Suzanne, how much you today?
Good to see you.
How you doing Suzanne?
Good to talk to you.
Hopefully we fly through the chickens because I'm missing part of the game.
Oh, oh yeah. Is this the first game in the series tonight? Yeah, because the Dodgers played the Mets last night. I think Dodgers won, right? Pretty interesting.
The Mets were winning six to one. When I left the house, it was in the sixth.
Tonight, today's game.
Oh wow.
I'm ready. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to go. Making sure it's on. Okay, now we're good. Had to actually turn it on, sorry about that. Like to welcome everyone to the October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four Peachtree City Planning Commission meeting. If everyone would please rise and follow me in pledging allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and start. Any additions or deletions this evening? Nothing? Okay, announcements and reports.
Not this evening.
Would we like to go ahead and introduce the new alternate to start off with?
Well, we do have a new alternate, Mr. Brett Haynes, and I'll let him sort of introduce himself to the group.
Sure, thank you. Pleased to be here. I'm pleased to have the opportunity to serve our community. I am homegrown, lived here the most of my life, and I look forward to serving in this manner.
Good to have you.
Perfect, thank you Brett. And also want to welcome, they've been on the commission now for Andrew for a couple of years now and Ray for two years?
One year.
One year, so this is his second. They have been, Andrew has been, I guess renewed, I would say for another three-year period, and Ray is joining us coming up from the alternate. So both, I'm glad you're both on the commission again for the next couple of years, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, one thing I would like to go ahead and make a change, and we'll since the agenda already went out. Like to go ahead and have the elections for chairperson and vice-chairperson ahead of the rest of what we have to do, just to go ahead and get that out of the way. So if I could have a motion to move the elections for chairperson and vice-chairperson up to announcements and reports.
So moved.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move the election up. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, so let's go ahead and have the election for the chairperson. We're going to need a nomination for chair, a second, and then an acceptance by that individual for the position. So do we have a motion for election of the chairperson?
I'd like to move to nominate Scott Rittenhour as the chair.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Aye, as Scott Rittenhour will accept that nomination, thank you. All those in favor of Scott Rittenhour for the chairperson for the next year signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we have the chair. Now looking for a nomination of vice-chairperson. Do we have any nominations for vice-chair?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Kenneth for vice-chair.
Okay.
I second that.
Unfortunately Kenneth is unavailable this evening, and I did confirm with Robin, with staff, that it's acceptable to go ahead and move forward with that. So we have a nomination, a motion for nomination of Kenneth and a second. I'm sure Kenneth will accept it in not being here. All those in favor of Kenneth for vice-chairperson signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, so Kenneth Hamer will be vice-chair again for the next year.
Congratulations.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anything else, announcements and reports?
We're good.
Okay, approval of minutes. So hopefully everyone's had an opportunity to take a look at the minutes from the September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four meeting. Any changes to that?
Mr. Chairman, I have just one clarification that maybe I want to ask staff. In the second paragraph under the rezoning text, it starts off saying the landscape ordinance required they consider six criteria. That should not be the landscape ordinance, right? It should be the zoning ordinance?
Yes, sir. We'll make that change.
That's the only text edit I saw.
Okay, any other additions or deletions or changes to the minutes? No? Okay, so do we have a motion to accept the minutes with the change?
Move to approve the Monday, September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four minutes with the change as presented.
Okay, second that?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve with changes, and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, minutes approved with changes, thank you. Okay, moving right along, we have the public hearing, the zoning text amendment to allow backyard fowl in certain residential districts. So before we go ahead and start, let me go over the public hearing procedures for everyone. When the public hearing is opened, members of the planning commission will become hearers. No action on their part is in order until the chairperson declares the hearing complete. The chairperson will allow each side equal opportunity to the floor. Individual members of the public will be given up to five minutes to state their case. First, city staff will present the request and provide an assessment of compliance with city code. Next, those supporting the issue will be heard, and that includes the applicant, if there is any. Then those opposing the issue will be heard. Prior to closing the public hearing, input portion of the meeting, city staff and the public will be given the opportunity to ask questions of either or both sides of the issue. When the chairperson is assured that the input is complete, the public hearing shall be ended, and the planning commission may then debate the issue and render a decision. All speakers from the public are asked to follow these rules. Come to the microphone and state your name and neighborhood prior to making remarks. Keep remarks under five minutes, and please do not repeat others' comments. And finally, address all comments to the chairperson. Thank you. And with that, I will turn it over to staff.
Thank you. So this item comes to us from city council directly, so we do not have an applicant. This is, the council, at the beginning of their year, they go to a retreat and they hash out their priorities, and this is one of the priorities, and what I mean that is that they agreed as a body to have the discussion about whether or not backyard chickens are appropriate. They do not present an opinion on the position on the item. They just want to be able to have the public discussion, which is what we're doing tonight. So to begin, the process, staff did a review of municipalities in the area. Tried to focus on more urban, suburban, rather than rural communities, and you all received a summary of those ordinances, and that is really the backbone of the, how this ordinance is structured, is taking some of the elements that are appropriate for a more suburban community and finding those that are, you know, universal, and bringing them forward to you all sort of to discuss on a point-by-point issue. And so the first thing we noticed is it's really important to define what a chicken is. And I know that seems silly, but there are a lot of different types of birds out there, and the state does not define, you know, what is considered domestic and what's considered wild. And so we really have to be very careful when we tailor this. We don't want us to be in a position where people have peacocks or guinea hen. As beneficial as those animals can be, they can be very loud. And so it seemed the important thing to do is define what a chicken is, and in this case, staff is proposing it to be up to what you see on the slide, a female pullet or hen of the Gallus Gallus, it's actually repeated twice, Gallus Gallus domesticus, which by defining it this way, you are prohibiting any of those animals as well as, or any of those other animals like P. fell, as well as roosters. So we don't end up with morning wake-up calls, and actually, they actually crow all day. It's not just morning. So the ordinance includes that, the proposed ordinance does. Another thing is, because we are downstairs in code enforcement, asking, you know, when we started asking staff what their concerns was, the first one is that they did not want to be chicken wranglers. And so the ordinance wants, needs to clearly state that the animals need to stay on, need to be fully enclosed at all time, and that they may not trespass onto other properties. And it also includes some language in there to give code enforcement the ability to go onto property to inspect the chickens if there are complaints. The next we want to make sure is that, really, let's see what else. One thing that was universal in the ordinance, and actually there's a UGA agricultural brochure on backyard hens that also includes this recommendation, is setting a minimum square foot area required for coops and for runs. And so that is copied, it's there at four square feet, square feet for coops, and ten square feet per bird for enclosed runs. That seems to be universal. Another thing that was universal was that they would only be allowed in backyards, not side yards, not front yards. And then the other thing that we want to establish, but doesn't have a universal set number, is how many birds per square, or I should say, how many chicken per size of the lot, and how far these facilities need to be from property lines. So a couple of the more urban areas like Swanee and Marietta started off with a minimum lot size around the ten thousand square feet. And luckily for us, our zoning ordinance ties very closely to the square feet of a lot, square footage of a lot. And so I've, we've proposed this table on the slide there, so that any lot less than ten thousand square feet would be, would not be allowed to have any chickens. But then ten thousand to, under twelve thousand, which is our zoning district one and, R1 and R10, would be allowed a maximum of three chicken. And then twelve thousand to just under twenty-two thousand, which is our zoning lot, R12 and R15 would be allowed a maximum of five. Then twenty-two thousand to just under forty-three thousand, which is our zoning district R22, is eight maximum. And then once you get to forty-three thousand square feet, which is just under an acre or larger, it goes to a ten chicken per acre or fraction thereof, but then sets a maximum of thirty. And that's your R43 and ER zoning districts. That's, again, that's a starting place to start the discussion. And then we're proposing a twenty-foot minimum setback of coops from any rear property line. And this is different than sheds. Sheds are, depending on your lot size, are permitted to be in the rear setback. There are limitations on the size of that shed and the size of your lot. And so this is different. Certain sized lots over a hundred linear feet wide can actually have a shed under a hundred and twenty-five square feet, as close as three feet to your rear property line. But we would like to propose that that's not an appropriate distance for a coop, that given the potential for smells and sounds, that it would be more appropriate that they be set at least twenty feet away from any property line. So that's sort of the bones of the ordinance. One of the things, it's not as crucial to you all, but at least from an administrative way, we are requesting to put it in an accessory use part of the zoning ordinance, rather than within each zoning district itself. It just makes it easier for staff to have it in one location, and that's the appropriate location. And it, there is, we do have a chapter on animals that is not in the zoning ordinance. It's a totally different chapter. But that's really about how to handle what's defined by the state as vicious animals. And so we really thought that because we're basing it on essentially lot sizes, which is a land use issue, that that's the appropriate place for it.
Thank you. Okay, since we don't really have an applicant, we'll ask if anyone is here, but I will now go ahead and invite anyone who is supporting the issue to please step up to the microphone and speak, if there's anyone. No? Okay. If there is no one, is there anyone opposing who would like to be heard? Okay, no one opposing. Any questions from anyone to, I guess it would just be staff? No? Okay. That being said, since we have no comments on either side, we're going to go ahead and close the public portion of the hearing and open it up to the commissioners. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and start to my right?
Questions?
Questions, yes.
I have a question, Robin. Do we know if any of the Peachtree City homeowners associations restrict the raising of backyard chickens?
I don't know. I don't have copies of all of their covenants. And frankly, we wouldn't even be able to enforce those covenants. They would have to do that at an HOA or a civil level.
It's very possible that they do exist, and it's also very possible that they may exist after we then allow this.
Yes.
Is there anything, so currently, because I guess I just don't have a lot of background on this issue, is there anything that just wouldn't allow it currently, or can people have them currently?
So because they are not considered a standard domestic animal, then all of our ordinance says, is that the, it actually sets the maximum number of dogs and/or cats that you can have. But by not saying that you're allowed to have something, it is, it is not permitted. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
So it's not permitted unless we
Give the right.
Give a right in the ordinances.
Right.
Okay, so it's very, it's very possible then that HOAs could decide to restrict this after we put it into place?
Sure, yes, absolutely.
No further questions?
Commissioner Leona, any questions?
I do. A couple of questions for the ordinance for staff. I think you did a really terrific job putting this together. I think it's very complete and makes a lot of sense in the way it's been structured. Just a couple of questions on some of the verbiage. And I guess a follow-up on your discussion about the definition. Does the definition go in here, or does it go in the definitions section of the ordinance?
We could do it that way. This is easier for administrative level than having, so the definitions are, this is like, what is this, section nine oh nine or something, and definitions are in section one. And so it's quite a few, it's quite a bit further away. The other thing, and I hemmed and hawed about this, is that definitions are, you know, very good for clarifying, but setting restrictions, specific restrictions and performance standards, you really want to have them in the ordinance. And so in this case, that's why the definition, so to speak, of what a chicken is by, in those parentheses, is located here. But it's, if you, you know, it's fine, we can also, we can do, we can add it to the definitions section, so it's in two places.
So I guess that was my question. I'm not seeing the definition in the draft ordinance.
Oh, it is
Where is it?
G. Q, I'm sorry, that's a Q. Where it says, "Coops and enclosed runs for female pullet or hens."
Okay.
Also known as backyard chickens. So that whole section is a section of what types of accessory uses other than residential are permitted. And so by putting it at the end, you're basically saying coops and runs for chickens are permitted.
Okay, so under, I guess it's QA where you specifically say roosters are not permitted. Should we also include the other birds that you listed in your memo?
Yeah, we sure can.
Because then that would make it crystal clear as to what is not permitted.
I might even say including but not limited to. Right?
And then I had a couple of other questions. I had seen in a few of the examples that some of the other jurisdictions had a minimum separation from the coop to an adjacent residential structure. Might we add that in here to say thirty feet or twenty-five feet, something like that?
We can do that, yes, sir. You know, most of those, where they're, except for the rural areas where this setback was like a hundred feet. Most, the largest number I saw was twenty feet, if I'm not mistaken. So that, that would be twenty feet plus whatever distance that home is. It is, it is more difficult for us to go out and measure if we get a complaint, where it's easier for us to go from the property line. That's, that, especially because it has to be fenced.
So the twenty-foot setback really kind of addresses that issue?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And on the runs, certain square footage, should there be some kind of a maximum height? Or am I, or is it in there and I'm not seeing it?
So what it says is that the fencing must comply with the city ordinance, which by definition limits, because we have a maximum of six feet high for fences.
The coop height?
Oh, you know, I didn't think about that. Yeah, we could do that.
I think a few of the
So we don't have three-story tall coops? That's a good question, good point.
I think it was eight feet to the eaves and twelve feet to the peak or something like that.
Okay.
That kind of made sense to me.
Yeah.
And then on, under QE three, it talks about coops shall be at least six-sided?
Basically, it needs a roof and a floor.
Oh, is that what that means?
Yes.
I was thinking of walls.
Yeah, no, I agree. That was sort of the standard reoccurring definition of how to say it had to have a roof.
So four walls, a roof and a floor?
Right.
Okay, that makes sense.
Although, I mean, that's a good point. Could somebody come in here with a hexagonal opened coop and say, well, it's got six walls, okay, yeah, let's add
Maybe it should just be clearer what that, what that means.
Add roof requirement. Okay.
Oh, I know what it was. If you look at accessory use standards in section nine oh eight dot six D, it talks about accessory use structure being eight feet in height from the existing ground to the eve and twelve feet to the peak of the roof.
So we could repeat that same exact language?
It would be the same thing, I would think, would make sense. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes, thank you. So following behind those questions, I think they have asked several things that I was interested in. But I think one of my concerns is related to noise, and the other one is transportation, right? The concern I have with noise is along the lines of currently there is a rooster that I can hear from my house. And I've heard it several times early in the morning. So I'm curious, and thank you for putting together the ordinances that you guys did, but I'm curious, how do these counties handle it when they do get these type of complaints of there being a rooster or something in the neighborhood? Do you have any visibility of that?
Well, counties, rural areas rarely restrict roosters, right? And you're on the edge of the city, and so kind of right across the city border is an agricultural area of the county, so so, and as you know, roosters, their voice carries. How we would handle it is we would locate the bird and call animal control. And they, you know, we'd, we'd give them forty-eight hours probably, a notice of violation, forty-eight hours to safely rehome the bird, or animal control would come in and confiscate, is that the right word? Confiscate your bird, your rooster.
Thank you for clarifying that. The last one pertains to just the larger lot sizes. Let's just play a guessing game here. If someone in a larger lot size at some point in time ended up with a whole lot of eggs, and then they decided to incorporate some sort of business as far as
Egg sales?
Yes.
So that is a really good point. Home occupations are a permitted activity. And as long as the activity occurs with inside the home, so for example, if somebody were selling eggs, they could not set a farm stand at the front yard and sell eggs from there. It would have to, you know, their customers would have to come in, park on their driveway, come into their home and purchase the eggs there. But that is a permitted use, unless we specifically say it's not, which this ordinance right now says the slaughter and sale, therefore, of the meat is not a permitted use, but it does not say that about eggs. So if that is something that you think we should add, we can, we can do that.
Are you sure of that concern?
We might want to consider it, yes.
So where it says C, chickens are maintained for personal pets or egg production, but not for sale of meat or breeding, we should also say or eggs. So you can make it, basically you can have the birds for your own personal egg production, but not for sale of those eggs. Okay.
I agree with that.
Is that, can I, is that a consensus? I hear two, is that generally?
So that's, that's item C?
Yes, sir. Okay, and eggs, okay.
And that's the two items I had, noise and transportation. Thank you.
Commissioner?
Haynes?
Thank you. Really just two questions. One, about the coops and runs being located in the rear yard only. How would we address that for multi-frontage lots?
So our ordinance does clearly define what a rear yard is, and it is the portion of the house that is behind the plane of the house. So on dual frontage corner lots, or we even have some that are triple, anyway, it would be the portion of the house that is behind the house itself, not behind a portion of the house, but also, but in front of the other side, you know what I mean? So it, luckily for us, that is addressed, that is defined.
Thank you. The other question I had would be in regards to permitting. Would it be possible for something to be added in here if someone was going to construct a coop? You don't want to get too much in the details of it. I mean, they make prefabricated coops or something, but is it a possibility where they could submit something to city staff just to make sure someone's not taking some weathered two-by-fours and throwing a piece of tin on top?
So our ordinance, we've adopted the International Building Code and the International Residential Code, and structures And structures that are not considered habitable, basically if you can't put your body in it, they're not regulated. And by us adopting that, we can't, we don't require permits for them. For example, believe it, like swing sets. Like we don't regulate the construction of swing sets, uh, cause they're not considered a habitable structure.
Right.
Um, and most coops aren't. Now, if there was a coop that was constructed that somebody could walk into, that, whether it's a coop or not, they need a building permit for that. Cause that's considered a habitable structure, you can put your body into it. But the other kind that you can't get into and it's just for the birds, we can't require a permit for it. Now, there is one community that does require permits for anybody to have backyard chickens. I, I don't have the staff below to add another permit requirement, um, for that. My, my request, of course, obviously, if, if this is something you think is really important and city council, staff will do it, that's what we're doing. Um, we're about to add a short-term rental, we're likely about to add a short-term rental permit. And just the, the bandwidth of the two of us downstairs, um, I would politely request that that not be something that we require as, as a permit for the chickens. But if that is something that you guys think that, and that, that's also a possibility is if it becomes such an issue, we can always come back and amend the ordinance and make it a requirement for permitting and add a fee to it and that type of thing. But, um, I will tell you from, from the number of calls that we get downstairs, I do not see this being, I don't see us, uh, seeing a run on chicken coops in Peachtree City. I, I, you know, maybe get one call a month and that's even stretching it about people asking where chickens are allowed. Um, zoning wise, zoning district wise. But, um, so permit requirements and, and the, the negative impacts that this might have on our communities such as noise or rogue runaway birds that we have to capture, um, you know, knock on wood, I, I'm, I'm not seeing us, my crystal ball is clear as it can be. I don't see this being a, a huge, uh, demand for us.
Right. Yeah, I, um, I know chapter one of the International Residential Code and Building Code, uh, anything under two hundred square feet doesn't require a permit by right. Um, but I guess my concern would be enforcement of this ordinance. Cause if I'm not mistaken, the right of entry is only based upon complaint. So how would we ensure the setback if they were not submitting something to staff to review?
We would rely on whether or not it can be seen from the street. So if an officer can see it from the street and they say, woo, that is clearly not twenty feet, they can, uh, they can knock on the door and, and issue a notice of violation. Or if somebody complains.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I don't have any specific questions, so I'm gonna open it up for, uh, comments. Commissioner Haines? Kick it back to you.
I guess I don't, I don't have any more comments. I think the ordinance is well-written. Uh, the question would just come to enforcement, but based on staff's recommendation, it doesn't seem to be that much of a, a concern. I know, um, uh, earlier comments were stated regarding many covenants are probably prohibitive of this. So I th, I think I'm good.
Okay. Commissioner Reeves?
I think you did a, um, very good job of putting this in front of us and I really appreciate it. Um, my only concern would be, um, the neighbors. But I guess there is, um, some way to deal with that in a HOA, if, if a community has one.
Right, and there's quite a few communities that don't. Basically, a lot of the stuff that, you know, our neighborhoods that were built in the seventies, eighties. Those HOAs don't exist anymore. And so the only protection those neighbors have would be this ordinance.
So I guess that begs the question. Um, it sounds as though what I understood is that if a, um, person living in a neighborhood that doesn't have a HOA, correct? And they have a fence around their backyard, um, no one, um, a policeman could not see visibly whether or not they have complied, correct? Um, so the only type mechanism we have is a complaint in order to, okay. That's a little concerning to me.
I share that concern as well.
That's all I have, thanks.
Yeah. Commissioner Leota?
Any comments? Um, I, I don't have any other comments. I, I agree with the commissioners on the comments that they've suggested for edits to the, to the draft. Um, maybe we want to think a little bit about whether the, a permit is actually needed. I mean, I've heard some very good arguments that would suggest a permit for something like this. Because it could potentially be a hundred and twenty square feet, could be twelve feet tall. Maybe needs a permit.
For the chickens themselves or just the coop?
For, for the coop.
Okay.
And I think the wa, the way I understand the reading, that the runs all have to be fenced.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Chris?
I have another question before I get into my comments. Did, did we look at, you know, the general decibel level of, of a gaggle of hens?
Um, it's, it's not seventy decibels.
Okay, cause, cause our noise ordinance is sixty-five during the day and sixty at night.
Right.
Right?
Right, so, um, so, but my, I have, my concern is not just the decibel level, but the continuation over a long period of time. Um, it's kind of like, um, having a neighbor who plays basketball outside all day, you know? Um, yeah, sure that, but if it happens all day, you know, for hours at a time, it can, and so, um, our noise ordinance, I, I, I believe our, I'm not sure how to address that. Or I would have already. Um, because we do have, the noise ordinance does say that if a barking dog persists over ten minutes, then they can be issued a no, a notice of violation. Um, hens talk all the time. And that's really where the maximum number is quite frankly low compared to the other jurisdictions that we looked at.
Yeah.
You know, three, three hens on a twelve thousand square foot lot, um, you know, people talking in their backyard are going to be louder than that.
Sure. Yeah, cause what, what I'm concerned about really is, you know, the folks that don't have HOAs, right? So the folks that have HOAs, I think, if, if the HOA determines that chickens are a nuisance, they will restrict it. And the folks that don't have HOAs are gonna look to us to protect them. And knowing, you know, generally, you know, the, the size of homes in our community, you know, putting three chickens on a lot that's got a huge house that's twelve thousand square foot, it's not a lot of room in that backyard. So from my perspective, you know, I, I don't, I wouldn't allow chickens at all until you get to like the twenty-two thousand square foot level be, for, for a property size. Cause that's like, what, a half an acre basically? Um, unless you have that kind of land, you know, knowing what the size of homes are going up here in Peachtree City right now, I just don't see it being allowable from an HOA perspective. I think they're gonna restrict it. And then the folks that don't have an HOA, we're just going to create nuisances in their neighborhoods, unfortunately. Um, so from, from my perspective, I think we should say zero chickens until you get to twenty-two thousand square foot lot size. And then it ramps up from there. Cause I think it has a potential to be a noise issue. I think it has potential to create, you know, attract other wildlife, like rodents or, or predators. And I think in a smaller lot-sized community, I think that is, that's gonna be a major nuisance.
I have another question.
Sure.
Do we, do we have a survey or any knowledge of whether or not this is something that the people in our citizens have a, actually asked for or requested?
Um, it was not part of our annual community survey, uh, survey. And from the comp plan back in twenty twenty-two, it certainly didn't raise to the level of, you know, top ten. There might have been a comment in the twelve hundred comments that we received. Um, I don't want to say that nobody commented on it, but it wasn't one of the top issues.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, any other comments?
No, I think that's really, I mean, if we were gonna propose recommending something to city council, I, I would be against it unless we put a, a, a lot-size restriction.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I thought about this kind of long and hard and, and, you know, I guess there's been, I mean, there has been some really, have been some really good comments. Um, you know, one of the things, um, that Commissioner Chris brought up is, is protecting, you know, those residents that don't live in HOAs. Um, you know, I've been on multiple HOAs, I was on the HOA in my neighborhood. Um, and we ran into a situation where one of the residents actually had exotic animals. Um, snakes and caiman and various other things. And, uh, one of the caiman got loose and got into the neighbor's pool. One of the snakes, a boa, got loose and got into the neighbor's garage and, uh, unfortunately for the boa, it doesn't exist anymore. Um, but, you know, I know my HOA was very, very upset and the residents were very upset. Um, and did a lot of work to figure out how not to allow that to happen, even taking it to the state level. Um, and, uh, you know, is it permitted to have these type of exotic animals and things such as that? So I'm, I'm pretty sure then if HOAs don't currently probably have restrictions, there, there probably will if, if something like this goes forward. It, but I guess, you know, really in my mind is, is what, what is the reason behind this? Is it, is it a, a pet? Um, is it a, a food security, um, sort of, sort of issue, um, that, you know, we did have over, over the pandemic? Um, you know, egg prices went through the roof, uh, you know, and, and we hope we never see that again. Um, but, you know, is it, is it just pets? Is it, is it more for, for, you know, personal food? Um, the other question I, I kind of started thinking about, are, are we creating a, a text amendment for, I don't want to consider it a non-issue? Um, but are we considering curating a text amendment for a non-issue? Since we haven't had a lot of, you know, really feedback from, from the city, from the residents asking, asking for this from what it sounds like. Um, you know, looking at, I hate to look at the negatives, but kind of looking at the negatives. Uh, you know, I, I grew up, uncle's family, we're, we're farmers, uh, dairy farms, everything else. So I'm used to having farm animals around and, you know, I, I do consider these type of, of animals, you know, more, more of a farm animal. Um, and with that comes, again, we, we talked about the noise. Um, you know, chickens are, they produce a lot of waste. Um, and, and what's gonna happen with that waste? Is it gonna be composted? Um, you know, our trash service in the city is, is once a week typically. And, uh, depending on the number of chickens you have and thinking about just one ninety-gallon toter, um, that's a lot of waste you may be throwing away and, and how's that gonna be taken care of? Um, chickens, I hate to say it, chickens smell. I mean, there's just no nice way to put it, they, they do. So, you know, what is the concern with, with that from the odor? And then again, you brought up a good point, just pests, uh, you know, we, we have foxes. Um, I haven't heard too many coyotes, but I know people have brought up that there are coyotes in the area. Um, and then we bring in vultures and hawks and things such as that getting, getting in there. Um, and then unfortunately, we, we've all probably heard about the uptick in avian bird flu. Um, and not as much with chickens, but more with the dairy industry. And workers that are directly in contact with, with the cows, um, have actually, you know, come down with, with avian flu. And, and luckily it hasn't been a big thing, but I know the CDC is concerned with ever-growing, um, you know, if we had an out, had an outbreak. Um, I, I guess I kind of look at it from the standpoint, is this something that we really want to introduce it into the city? Um, again, if, if it was a true food, food security and, and there were issues with that, maybe I would, I would think a little different. Um, but are we putting undue burden on, on neighbors? Are we gonna put undue burden on code enforcement, um, to have, to have chickens? Um, you know, the twenty-foot setback from, from the property lines? One of the things I read was actually the several ag extensions recommend minimum twenty feet from a residential structure. So now we're twenty feet from residential structure recommendation and we're twenty feet from, from the property lines. Um, and like you said, in small lots, it's probably not feasible. So I, I think if we look to do anything, I, I agree, it has to be in, in larger properties. Um, you know, my property, I could have up to, up to ten. Um, you know, then I start thinking, well, my, my neighbor on one side, if they decided they could have ten, and my neighbor on the other side, if they decided they could have ten. Not realistic to think, but that would, we would give them the opportunity to, to do that. And is that, again, something that we want to go ahead and do? So, um, I, I have some concerns with this. Um, I wouldn't say that I'm, I'm entirely a hundred percent against it, but it, it's definitely concerning from, from at least what we have right now, especially with those smaller properties and especially those without the HOAs, I think. So. I guess any, any other comments or, or questions before we look for a, a recommendation?
Yes, is council looking for a recommendation from us?
Yes, sir. It has to, it's a zoning text amendment, so, um, yes, sir, you have to make a recommendation. And, and what I would say is if you, and maybe you can agree, um, as a body, but if you don't agree as a body, it's okay for your recommendation to be something along the lines of, um, here's what we, the text amendment that we recommend and a minority opinion is that this, you know, it's, it's in the same way that we did with the STR.
Yeah.
So let them know that it, uh, wasn't unanimous and that there's some questions.
No. I think you raised a good point, Scott. I mean, are we, are we introducing something that's not even desired in the city? You know, I think that's an excellent point.
And I would agree. Um, I don't understand what the driver is. And to not fully understand what the driver is, um, I don't see a reason to put potentially neighbor against neighbor or, um, any additional load on our services here. I just don't understand the driver.
I do wanna, um, I don't, I don't want to present one side and not the other. Obviously, if it's council-driven, they're very connected to, you know, the people that they talk to. And so there may be, uh, ground support for this that is just not getting to this, you know, downstairs city hall. So I, I'm not trying to say that there is no support or there's lots of support, I'm just giving that, uh, context.
In, in hearings, some of the discussion from commissioners about the nuisance issues, um, I agree with those comments. And if we were to, um, look at proposing an allowance within the, uh, the ordinance, uh, I think it probably then wants to point towards the larger lots. The forty-three thousand acre and above size, which would, in my mind, limit the nuisance issues significantly because of the extra space.
Yeah, I agree.
I would agree as well.
So, um, it, it, I'm hearing four agrees. Would you, uh, there were two numbers that were mentioned, the twenty-two, that basically the half acre, the acre. What do you all think is an appropriate size to begin having chickens?
My initial thought was you have to have at least a half an acre, but I'm okay with an acre as well because I, you know, I have concerns from what Commissioner Rettenhour said, you know, about the, the, the myriad of potential nuisances that exist. So I'd be okay with, uh, uh, over an acre. But I, I, I think what it sounds like we're all talking about up here is that we should recommend to council that we don't accept this. At, but, but that if we do, we only should allow it on lots that are greater than one acre.
I would agree with that.
I think that's a good way to put it.
Yeah, I would agree with that. It wouldn't be something that I would recommend, but since they asked.
Yeah.
Um, if we're gonna do it, um, at least an acre.
And then there would be a restriction.
I'm in concurrence with that.
Okay.
Okay.
May I add one, one thing further? Um, uh, again, we don't want to overburden staff as well. So maybe it's something, again, if we recommend a larger size, maybe we require something, um, submit a site plan. And then when it's done, submit an as-built that's stamped by a professional land, land survey or something, almost like a form survey check. That way staff does not have to go out in the field, you're not issuing a permit, but we still have something saying, hey, it was done right, it was done like we said we're going to.
hey, it was done right. It was done like we said we're going to. And at least that could be something for records. That way you're not having to physically send someone out there. And it might assist code enforcement from a regulatory aspect, say, hey, look, you said it was going to be here. We've got this thing. It is here. It's not, so.
I love that because it puts the burden on the homeowner. However, do keep in mind, I have heard through the grapevine, and grapevine being our front desk, surveyors are very busy and are, and therefore very expensive, like in the thousands now. And so maybe not an as-built, but maybe a counter permit that requires a, see, what, what I, what is good about requiring a permit is that gives us right of entry on the property regardless of having a complaint. And so if we do require a permit, then they submit a site plan. They show us how far things are going to be, how big things are going to be. We can verify it. And, and by having signed that permit application, they have given us the ability to go onto the property and verify that it's done correctly regardless of complaint.
And, and Robin, you're looking, if we're looking at forty-three, I mean, R forty-three and ER?
That's basically less than half the city.
I was going to say that's, that's less, at least less, yeah.
Yeah, that's a lot less work.
Yeah.
Not that I want that to be the driver.
Well, with that.
Phrase the motion.
Yeah, phrase, phrase the recommendation.
I move that we recommend to city council that Petrie City does not adopt a backyard chickens, chickens ordinance. And if we do, that they are on, backyard chickens are only allowed, allowed for lots that are greater in size than forty-three thousand square foot, square feet with an appropriate permitting process.
Okay.
I would second that.
So we have a motion for recommendation as stated and a second. Any other questions or comments as to the motion? In that case, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. Recommendation as stated. Okay, so we have no old agenda items. So moving on to new agenda items, the first is the building elevation splash and dash car wash two-ten Stevens entry. Turn it over to staff.
Okay. This is, I guess this is on, yes, sir. All right. You all are probably familiar with this lot, two-ten Stevens entry. It's in the first block off of fifty-four there. You can see zoned GC for general commercial. And the aerial photograph shows you that it's behind the, I believe it's a BP gas station. Anyway, behind the gas station, here it is right here. And the, there's a new owner of the car wash and they're very interested in making some upgrades and improving the lot. And we're here to look at their proposal. You'll see down here in the corner is a photograph of the existing, a partial photograph of the existing view from Stevens entry. And just to confirm, this is, this lot is required to meet the ordinances for architectural design because this portion of Stevens entry is considered a major thoroughfare. So that's why we're here looking at this. So you'll see the existing building. It's a, it's a brown brick and the fascia is faded and in much need of repair. And it has some blue and yellow accents there. The proposal is to, they'd like to cover the majority of the brick with a hardy board, hardy board panels that would be painted in a warm gray color. And then the remaining brick would also be painted in the same color for, you know, cohesiveness there. And then they'd like to replace the fascia with a new metal fascia that would be painted a graphite color and it'll have a textured finish. So that'll, you know, minimize any kind of glare or that type of thing. And then also a knee wall is proposed, a stacked stone around the front and side elevations. So you're looking here at the, this would be the new front look along Stevens entry and sort of an angled view of the front. And then what they're proposing, so that right now the bays, the internal bays of the car wash are also brick and it's, it's very, it's very hard to keep clean. There's some discoloration, some black. And so in order to, for ease of maintenance, they would like to replace or not replace, sorry, cover that with these, this PVC paneling that would have hidden fasteners. So it would just be a nice, smooth, look like paneling, and then it would be very easy to clean. And that would be white in color. So as a general rule, you know, we have for primary materials, front facades approximately eighty percent and side fifty percent. Well, staff does consider the hardy board a primary, primary material. It's a durable material. We feel it meets the intent of the ordinance. And there's no requirement for primary materials on the rear facade. So the proposal, obviously there's not much facade in the front and rear because of the openings for the bays. But the proposal shows in the front approximately thirty percent primary materials. And this is the portion, this is the rear. The rear, again, primary, primary materials approximately thirty percent. Sides are closer to seventy-three percent. As part of the renovation, they would like to increase, expand two of the bays to include a, it's sort of a, a self-service automated washing base. Right now it's completely manual, the bays that are there now. So that would include this portion here, an extension out the rear to house those new, new machines. And that would be a continued look. They would have that covered with the same hardy siding and continue the stacked stones so that if you were on, now I can't remember the name of the side street, but the side street.
Prime point, isn't it?
Yes, that's correct. Would have this continuous look, same color materials for a unified look. So again, the colors, the Dorian gray, which is a warm gray, the hardy siding, that was for the brick and the hardy siding, the, the knee wall, the stone knee wall is similar, similar to warm colors. And the fascia, again, is that graphite color. And staff feels the color selection is subtle and neutral and satisfies the ordinance requirements. So the proposal does, for the upgrade does satisfy majority of the standards and, and of course enhances the visual appearance of the community. However, since the ordinance does say natural brick should not be painted, the approval for the upgrades is up to the discretion of the planning commission.
Thank you. Is the applicant here by chance?
I guess not.
Okay. Well, I'm going to go ahead and turn it to the commissioners for any questions, I guess, of staff, and then we'll do comments. Raise your hands.
The only comment I have is I blatantly agree with the not painting brick. If it is original brick, you should generally never paint it because it's designed to breathe the moment you paint it with, with an alternative material, something like this. Sherwin-Williams, I was trying to look it up for the composition, but you could actually compromise the brick itself. And that's the only comment I have. Commissioner Reeves?
No questions.
Commissioner Leota?
I do have a question for staff. This is showing an addition to the existing building, correct?
That's correct. And you're not approving the addition itself.
So I, I guess my question is, wouldn't they need to come before us for a site, a concept site plan before the building elevations?
So our ordinance only requires that if it's more than five thousand square feet of disturbed area. So this is a small enough addition. It wouldn't come through you.
So that's the reason for no site plan submittal?
That's correct.
Okay. Then I guess, are there any issues with setback in, in the rear for the addition?
I don't, I don't believe so, no.
Okay. That, that would be my only comment to the addition.
That we would look at when the building permit for that addition is submitted.
Yes.
Which we require this step to occur before the building permit can be applied for.
Okay. I, I don't happen to know what that setback requirement is, so it, it was just a question on. Without seeing a site plan.
I know, it's ten feet on the side. I, I don't, I have the zone, the, the residential setbacks in my head, but not the commercial ones.
Okay.
We would definitely make sure that it does, though.
And, and in terms of the, the renovation, I thi, I think it's a, it's a nice cleaner look. And, and I did take a look at it over the weekend, and I do tend to agree with the, the brick being a challenge to keep clean and keep it from molding and those kind of issues. But I like the, the stacked brick at the bottom and the color selections, I think, are, are compatible with what we're looking for in general terms. So I don't have any real issues with what's being proposed in terms of the renovation colors or materials. I did have a question, but since the, about the hardy plank, but the applicant's not here, and I wanted to know if it was the, the type of siding that overlaps, just like a house siding? Would, would there be a shadow line between the two planks?
It looks like that's what they submitted on their board.
Or is it just, or are they just stacked straight on top of each other?
No, I, I believe it's more of a.
Kind of looked like a siding.
Actually, you know what? I believe they're, the elevations, although you can't read them here, I think they do say board and battened. What I wasn't entirely clear on, they also show the textured panel that looks more like a stucco.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure where that is exactly.
So if it's board and battened, there is some physical relief to the, the profile. It's not just a flat wood.
Correct.
Okay, all right. That answers my questions.
Commissioner Chris?
You know, I really don't have, I do have a question for staff. The, the points that Commissioner Haynes brought up about painting brick, is, is that typically why we have in the past tried to stay away from painting brick?
Brick technology has changed a lot. And so, and so has paint technology. I am not a materials expert, though. I have heard that, and I know from my art history, architectural history background, is that the way bricks used to be made, absolutely, if you painted them, you, you were creating a problem. I have not heard that about the recent brick technology. However, again, I'm not a materials expert.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just happy that they came to us before doing it, which was not the case for a couple of other applicants. And, and the funny thing is, it looks very similar to, to what those other folks have done and then came to us and we approved. White with the painted brick and the dark on top and the stone below. So in my opinion, it looks very similar to what a lot of folks are already doing in, in that general corridor without us having an overlay district. So, yeah, no, nothing further from me.
And the only question or questions I had probably would need to be addressed by the applicant. I mean, I was going to ask if it's very similar to, and I'm assuming it kind of looks that way, to the car wash that's been upgraded on, on Georgian Park.
Actually, that's where they recommended, didn't you say?
Well, that's where the white paneling picture is from.
I was going to say, it looks very familiar. And, and it, and the system, I'm not sure if the system they, they put in, because they have an automated system also, is a similar system that they may be looking to put in here, which is more the.
Probably.
Kind of laser wash, you know, brushless sort of.
I believe that they also have a, a location in Fayetteville.
Okay.
That I don't, I'm not sure what colors they use there. Probably a little bit different because our, I think our ordinances are a little more strict with the color and painting brick and that kind of thing, but.
Okay. So it's the only question I had. So comments? Commissioner?
No comments.
Commissioner Leota? Any comments?
Nothing else.
Commissioner Reeves?
No comments.
Commissioner Haynes?
The only comment is the rear setback's thirty feet.
And, and the only comment I, I have, I, I, kind of with, with Commissioner Haynes, I've, I'm not a big fan of, of painted brick. I've, I've kind of said that in the past. I, I like the color scheme. I, I like the look. It's a much, much better look than what it is currently. I hate to admit, but it's probably been a long time since I've used the car wash there, but I have in the past. It, it definitely looks better, but my concern, again, is, is going the painted brick route. Just unfortunately not a big fan of, of taking natural materials like that and, and painting them. So that's everything that I have. So going to go ahead and then look for a motion from the commissioners to, from what I'm hearing, approve, it sounds like, but.
Move to approve the building elevations for the splash and dash car wash at two-ten Stevens entry.
Okay. Motion to approve. Do we have a second? All second. Second, so we have a motion to approve and a second. Any comments or questions on the motion? Okay. All those in, all those in favor of, of approving signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, so three to one. Motion is approved.
All right, we'll move on to some more building elevations. The next project is one that we've looked at before and was previously approved. It is located in the Kedron Village Shopping Center on an out parcel, right here. And here's an aerial photograph of the property. The Caliburn Advisors is the, the company, the owner. And they realized, or they've come to the conclusion that their original proposal was a bit cost prohibitive. So they're asking for some modifications to the original proposal. So there you have the existing building, was originally built in the nineteen nineties. It's got some peach colored brick with white trim. It's not highly, it is on a major thoroughfare of Highway seventy-four, but it's not very visible from the highway due to the large landscape buffer. The approval, you'll see down here in the, in the lower right corner. Anyway, lower right corner, was approved to paint the building of a white, Sherwin-Williams Idar White. The entrances were going to be renovated. You'll see on the left, the entrance on the left had some, some structural modifications. And it's a little hard to see in the picture, but that was proposed to be a stone. And then all the sort of bronze colored upgrade, and the roof was proposed to be a bronze metal roof. They have already replaced the roof and rather than going with the, the metal, they just replaced the existing asphalt shingles to a charcoal colored architectural asphalt shingle. So that has already been done. They are, they are asking to eliminate, they'd, they, again, cost prohibitive to do the structural modifications and the stone also. So what they would like to do is shown on the left, to paint the whole building, leave the entrances as is, and include the black accents, which is a tricorn black by Sherwin-Williams, around that accent band and the, the gutters and trim and the door, the door and window trims. So again, this does involve painting brick, which once was already approved, but still is at your discretion for approval.
Okay, thank you, staff. Is the applicant here with us? Is the applicant here with us this evening?
Sure.
Please step up to the microphone, give your name.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
My name's Perry Jewell, and this is.
Derek Rimmertinger.
I can't really say his last name very well. Only known him about three years. So as she explained really well, where Caliburn Advisors were over in the Kedron Shopping Center. And I guess I should say first, thank you for approving the original piece. But as she said, once we got several contractors involved in that sort of thing, it was not just a little cost prohibitive, but quite a bit cost prohibitive. So what we've had to do is come back, and as you can see, we've had some renderings done of what we'd like to do. And quite honestly, we're just asking for your blessing.
Thank you. I'm gonna go and open it up, the questions from commissioners. Commissioner Liotta, any questions?
I happen to like the new version better than the one that was previously approved. I think it's a, really a sharp looking design, the way that you designed the paint scheme and whatnot. And it's similar to what was approved previously. And, and thinking about the, the painting the brick topic, I'm sure the technology now in terms of painting brick probably requires the brick to be sealed first, before it's painted. I'm just thinking that might be something that happens. I don't happen to know, I'm not a painter. But that's an applicant issue. I don't know if that's something that the commission really is, should, should tackle as to whether brick can or cannot be painted. But I like the, the scheme, and I don't have any other questions beyond my comments.
To address that point, we weren't smart enough to have that concern. However, the different painters that we've talked to around that have brought up that, like she mentioned earlier, a lot of the technology, I guess, has changed with painting. I know that I painted the brick at my home. And I guess acrylic latex and that sort of thing is, as we say, the technology's really gotten a lot better over the years. So the painters have told us that there shouldn't be any problems. Now, I'm not a painter, so I have to go on their word, but even the contractor that did all the work on the inside told us the same thing.
Anything else, Commissioner? Commissioner Reeves?
I think it looks very nice. The only question I would have is to staff. So since we are being educated about paint, is there some way that we can update our ordinance to specifically address the paint? Because as it is right now, we, from what I'm hearing, we don't like painted brick. You know, but we seem to be approving painted brick based on the new technology.
Something that would, if a U D O is approved, this is one of the many things to add to that list.
Okay, very good. As far as your design is concerned, I think it looks really nice.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Commissioner Haynes?
No comments.
Commissioner Reeves, anything else, comments or questions?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Liotta?
No other comments.
Commissioner Chris?
Yeah, no, I'm just happy to see the, the update in the Kedron community. I think it's gonna be really nice. So it's too bad that you couldn't go with the original design, but totally understand. Looks like you're updating some of the lighting fixtures as well, maybe?
Yes, sir.
Okay, cool.
We just, you know, one thing at a time.
Sure.
A lot of, a lot of the landscaping, they've told us, you know, these guys teach us as we go, right? But they've said, look, you have to do the landscape, the parking lot, everything, that has to be at the very end.
Sure.
Which makes common sense after you think about it. We just, we're financial people, we don't really understand building anything.
Okay, no, no further questions from me, kind of comments.
So I just, I, I guess I have one, well, let me make a, a comment first, I'll ask a question. The reason why, why we had you come back in was because of, of the changes that have been made. So we thought it would best to go ahead and have you come back in because there have been a number of changes since the approval. So just wanted to let you know that, that that's why. The only question I have is, is, and I know that's a proposed elevation. I don't believe you've made any changes to the outside structure of the building, correct?
We have not.
Okay, because I'm just looking at the proposed elevation, and it, of course, visually is different than, than your existing. I just, and I just went past there yesterday, and I didn't notice anything, so.
Well, we didn't invite you to stop in and see the inside.
I, I would like to, actually. Yeah, I know one of the, one of the issues we had on the original was, you know, trying to get that demarcation between the two different entrances. And that's why it was, you know, to really show off the entrance. And, and when you had proposed the stone, giving it that, that different look between the two. You know, it looks like you've been able to do that with the, the color scheme that you have. And, and it looks, unfortunately, you were, you were saddled with, with a very unappealing brick color, if, if we would say it that, that way. Kind of, I don't want to call it peach, but it was sorta, kinda.
It was, it was a fast moment.
Yes.
In the nineteen nineties design period. I remember my parents had that peach brick.
Yeah.
And you don't see it anymore.
No.
I think it's pretty kind to call it peach.
Okay. Yeah, and like I said, very, very unfortunately unappealing, I, I, you know, as, as it turned out to be so. Looks, looks so much better. Again, my, my concern is, is always, you know, just the, the painted brick. You know, and, and I think that's something that, and a good point was brought up is we, if we go into the U D O, it's something to, to evaluate, whether or not it is an, an exception as it continues or as we see possibly more and more redevelopment. And, and just the cost of, of doing that, is that something we need to take a, a much deeper and harder look at as, you know, as the commission or as, like I said, if the U D O goes forward? So I think that was a good point, bringing that up. So that's everything that I have. Gonna go ahead and look for an, a motion on this?
I'll make a motion that we approve the building elevations for one one zero four North Peachtree Parkway.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and second. Any questions, comments on the motion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes, three to one. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you.
Okay.
By the way, this is a really sweet lady right here. She's been really helpful putting up with us.
Thank you.
Yep.
We know.
So our last is the landscape plan, Hoshizaki six eighteen South Highway seventy four.
Oh, we're not quite there. I know, you're getting, you're, you're very optimistic. We have the Gerber first.
Did I miss that in the, I guess I missed it?
Oh, no.
No, that's not on the agenda.
Yeah, sorry.
It's just the slide, okay.
Yep.
Bad slide.
Okay. So we'll go to Gerber next.
No, no.
No.
The slide was wrong.
Okay, I was gonna say, yeah, I didn't, I didn't see Gerber on the.
No, it's not.
Like, did we have an agenda item pop in there all of a sudden?
That was last time, sorry.
Okay. Back to Hoshizaki.
Six eighteen Highway seventy four. All right, located here on Highway seventy four in the industrial zoning district. Here's a, an aerial photograph. And this is for their expansion. Again, we've got lots of plant material here. So based on the amount of impervious surface, which is two hundred and twenty eight thousand nine hundred and thirty nine square feet, the ordinance requires them to plant a minimum of, and that's just, by the way, for the expansion, part of the project, not the entire site. The ordinance requires a minimum of six hundred and eighty seven caliber inches of canopy trees and four hundred and fifty eight caliber inches of understory trees. In addition to those requirements, a condition was added to the project as part of the building elevation review, the waiver of the building elevation review that was, requires evergreen trees to be planted to help screen the building from Highway seventy four where the, there's a small gap in the existing buffer right here where the power line comes onto the property. And in order to satisfy that requirement, they have provided arborvitae's pines and Nellie Stevens hollies. And the requirement is for those, that plant material to be ten to twelve feet high. And that is, they've, down here in the plant schedule, they've separated out these, this plant material with that, with that spec- specification. Again, that's all right in this area. And then even in this large landscape island here, they provided a few cryptomerias as well, so all, all evergreen material. The proposal is for, for canopy trees, they provided sixty percent of the requirement at four hundred and seventeen inches, and for understory, seventy five percent of the requirement at three hundred and forty four inches. And since they are not able to meet the one hundred percent requirement, they're requesting the tree fund option, which can only be requested after all of the canopy and understory trees that can be reasonably planted on the site are provided. And it is the opinion of the staff that that requirement is being met, as well as the additional requirement for the evergreen screen. And therefore, staff is recommending approval.
Thank you. Do we have the applicant?
Hey, I'm Warren with All South Landscapes, the designer for Hoshizaki.
Okay. Any comments to add?
So I know there was a, a lot of concern with the community in the area on the very back, on the top side where the golf cart path is, people that would drive by there, so we tried to take a focus to put larger trees along that edge there. So to, to replant some of that slope that was there and then not there for the construction. Additionally, putting some more plants on the top side of the, the golf cart path side of that new parking lot that's up there. So when you're down at that lower elevation at the very bottom, it really has a lot of different plant materials and textures and heights to block that back of that building and that parking lot from that golf cart path. And then like Laura said, the, the buffering in, in the, when the power comes in on the south.
Good. Thank you, Warren. Okay, I'm gonna open up. Any questions, Commissioner Reeves?
No questions.
Commissioner Haynes?
No questions.
Commissioner Liotta?
I have some comments, actually, because at the last meeting where we looked at the elevations, I was concerned about the amount of tree removal in the back on that slope. And when you looked at what was removed back there compared to the original concept plan that was approved, it looks, it looked like there was a lot more tree disturbance back there than initially anticipated. And I understand plans change and things happen. But I had a concern at the last meeting that there'd be a fairly good job in planting that slope. And I personally do not think this is sufficient to meet my expectation from the last hearing. But I do have a suggestion. I know we're talking about taking some of the plant material and putting it into the tree fund option, which I think is an appropriate avenue. But I think I'd like to see some of the canopy tree caliber inches planted on, on that slope area where the love grass is being seeded. But I would suggest that it could be a little easier if maybe some one inch whip type trees are planted on that slope from the type of trees that were removed to try to replicate that forest canopy that was there and then reduce that number against what's paid into the fund. I'm suggesting maybe thirty percent of the deficit in canopy tree caliber inches only be addressed in that manner. And then the remainder of the caliber inches can go into the fund. That, I, I think that would, I think, address long term letting that slope come back to life with using smaller trees, probably more successful using smaller trees on a slope like this where there's gonna be minimal maintenance of them. I think you'll have more success in getting more trees to succeed in that area and address my initial concern at the last, at the last hearing.
So the only issues that I see with that is the severity of that slope. And as those trees get larger and some of that, the longevity of those, to be able to be, have that stability on that slope to where they can stay for a long period of time. Because any of, sort of the smaller and, and, you know, like you're saying, like a, a one inch or one gallon tree, like a reforestation, are gonna be mostly like a pine or, and you can even do some oaks. But, but again, the severity of that slope that's there, the native love grasses and a progression of the native peat mott that would grow back in that space, I, I think is, is gonna happen at that same rate that putting some of those small things are. That's why we tried to plant larger stuff and a lot of big trees and magnolias along that path to give that same illusion before those things can grow back on that slope. Because like, like you were saying, the, the maintenance on, and that severity of the slope is just tough to maintain. We also wanna not dig too much in the slope till you don't have any erosion issues with a lot of more moving, more dirt in that space. But we can certainly talk about that.
So are you?
Yes, go ahead.
Clarification. So are you saying that planting the love grass, that over time, that area will re-naturalize to something beyond love grass?
Unless it's maintained as love grass, yes.
And is that the intent, is to basically let it re-naturalize? Where, can somebody show me where exactly we're talking about, because I'm?
I'll, I'll, I'll point to the area if I can draw on my screen.
Yeah.
The area that, that's it, you've got it, that.
Okay. So we're not, because we, what we don't want to do is put trees above the stormwater.
No, not near the basin.
Okay, okay.
It's, if I can draw on here, how to, do I? It's not.
Not letting you. There you go, okay.
So that area. And it looks like it's an acre or two. And I think it would be a very good idea to use small container type plants. Count them as one inch size, have it count against the caliber inch requirement.
Except at that, oh, yeah, no.
And, and then you, you can reduce the tree fund to some extent, but still get a leg up on reforestation of that slope. That's, that's my suggestion and opinion on it. I don't, I don't know how the other commissioners feel about it, that's just my thought process on trying to see more trees eventually established in that area.
Are, are we looking at at least a ten to twelve foot drop slope wise? I mean, that's at least that, going down that.
Probably thirty feet.
Oh, it's more than that?
One to two, yeah.
Oh, okay, it's one to two, yeah, because I'm looking at the topography there and I'm seeing. Yeah, that's, I was trying to figure out exactly the scale on, on the drop there, and I just saw.
Did you say fifty, five zero?
Forty, forty six feet, yeah.
Forty six.
From the parking lot to, to the golf cart path, yeah, you just.
Okay. I didn't realize it was quite that extensive. I thought it was a lot less than that. Oh, thank you, perfect.
Oh, wow.
Going, going from the parking lot, it's quite extensive.
Commissioner Liotta, is your concern, just out of curiosity, just the, the general canopy over the path? Is that what you're trying to recreate over time?
No, my concern was that the initial concept plan approval showed a retaining wall that was going to not disturb as much tree growth in that rear area, and it was clear cut. And now it's just a big exposed earth slope. And I would prefer to see, and I'm suggesting smaller material because that makes it easy. because that makes it easier to install it on a steep slope. And I get that, I understand that. But it can be done and I think it would go a long way to help that slope establish long-term.
And stabilize the land there.
And once those trees stabilize, they're gonna help to stabilize the slope.
Well, it would have to be in conjunction with the love grass. Because you can't, with a one to two, you can't, even with a lot of those little whip trees, you can't cover enough area to stabilize it. So it would have to be in addition.
In addition to the love grass. That's correct, not just, not just the trees.
Ninety percent established.
Yeah.
It's, the love grass is there. It's, it's holding that slope currently. And I think we would be amicable to put in the smaller trees like you're talking about if we can count towards reducing the tree fund.
I'm totally agreeing to that as a suggestion that, and it doesn't have to be all of the deficit, I'm thinking thirty percent of the canopy tree deficit, which really is only about eighty trees, eighty-one trees.
Yeah, we can work out the numbers for that. I mean, I think if it could be all of the deficit, I think that the intent is to put as many trees as possible on the site. We just are running out of room because of the slope. So if we can change that to a smaller gallon-sized tree that can grow in that space, just native trees.
That's what I'm suggesting. And it doesn't have to be the entire canopy tree deficit because I think it's too many trees. But I think if it's roughly a third, they're gonna be spaced enough to get them to grow properly.
I mean, it's a big slope. I mean, eighty-one trees is barely gonna touch that slope. So I, I think we can do it in whole if.
You want to do all of them, do all of them, but I'm giving you an option to do less. If they want to plant all of the trees in there, that's, that's their option. But I'm, I'm giving them an option to plant less and pay a little bit less into the tree fund. And still achieve a stable slope long-term.
Gentlemen, if that works for you all.
Yeah, I, if, if we can plant the rest of the trees instead of donating to the tree fund.
Just the overstory. Because the understory, you would never plant those on the slope anyway. I think if we were just working on the.
Yeah.
On the overstory.
I'm just talking about the canopy underage or over, overage, excuse me, the difference. It's two hundred and seventy caliber inch difference based on the math.
Oh. Okay, sorry, I was, I was making an error. I thought it was four hundred missing. But you're saying, you're right, that was my problem. Okay, so two hundred and eighty, okay.
The difference.
It's the difference, okay. That I, I understand. I was thinking four hundred, I was like, that's a lot of. Okay, two eighty.
Well, that's great.
Well, two, two seventy is what I think is the difference.
Okay.
And I was suggesting just a third of that caliber inch difference be planted.
Well, what you could do is make the motion that staff work with the applicant to determine how many can be planted on, of the whip size can be planted on the slope with the remaining inches to be contributing towards the tree fund.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Yep. Commissioner Chris?
No, no further comments or questions. I support Commissioner Liotta's efforts here, so.
And nothing else, I agree a hundred percent. Commissioner Liotta?
Just the overstory.
Over.
So there will still be some tree fund contribution required.
I'd like to go ahead and request the motion and Commissioner Liotta?
I'll move to approve a plan subject to the discussion of planting some additional overstory or canopy caliber inches to be worked out with staff in the rear slope area. And then the remainder of the non-planted caliber inches to go into the tree fund with the tree fund understory payment.
Second?
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay. Approved. Thank you very much, Warren. Appreciate that. Okay. So we do have one item remaining. Fortunately, Commissioner Hamner was not able to be here this evening with us. But I know he sent out the updates to the presentation that's coming up in November, coming quickly in November. As well as a little video explaining some of the changes that have been made. Had an opportunity, hopefully everyone's had at least a bit of an opportunity to take a look at that. Like to open it up for, for any comments. I know Laura has that loaded. If we need to go ahead and put it up on the screen, we can. If not, we can go ahead and have a discussion and then just take some notes accordingly for that also and get that back to Kenneth. So any, just gonna open it up.
Again, I think Ken's doing a bang-up job putting all of this together. It's a, it's a big effort on his part and I don't, hopefully he, he knows how much we, you know, feel how much he's doing for that effort.
Yeah, I think I sent a couple kudos to him today for his, for his work. He got in touch with me this morning, so.
The one thing that I think we've kind of refined it. We've refined it quite a bit and we've made a lot of really good and interesting suggestions to this. And I would honestly suggest at this point that we, we don't make any more edits until we get comments back from council.
I, I think unless there's anything major that comes up, you know, that we see. I mean, I've, I've read through it once, I'd like to go back through it again. But I think he's, he's, you know, captured the information that, that we had. You know, the initial discussions that Kenneth and I had and then adding everything in and then adding the information that staff has provided. And I think that really ties it very well together with some of the issues that have been documented for some of the, again, inconsistencies and things that have been, been realized over, over the years and what that is. So I, I agree, I don't know if there's anything, like I said, unless there's something major that we see and, and staff, anything happened to notice? And I agree, I think we need to go ahead and be very, very soon, if not now, go ahead and lock it down and say this is where, where we're at and make sure we're, you know, well aware of, of where things are going into the, into the city council meeting. I know there was a comment from
Justin.
Justin, saw that about the Vittalid centers.
Yeah.
So we'll take a look at that and see. I didn't have a good bit of time this afternoon unfortunately to kind of go over his, his comment.
Yeah, that was my only comment, is that we take that into consideration.
Right. I think going from, what was it?
Six to seven.
Correct, yeah. But I think overall, again, Kenneth has done a great job of pulling all this together and putting it into a very detailed from, from the information that we have in very, you know, usable form. A lot of times presentations like this, they're just a lot of slides, a lot of charts, a lot of information. And I think he's done a great job of, of really making it understandable and readable, which is important as, as we go in and ask council to, to do what we're asking them to do to be able to move forward with this. So anything else from, from the commissioners? And I guess, Commissioner Haynes, I don't know how much you're familiar or knowledgeable of what has been kind of going on. But city last year tried to put together a U D O, Unified Development Ordinance. Unfortunately, did not progress very far for, for a number of reasons. And was kind of put aside. And really commissioners, you know, dealing with this all the time really said, hey, is there something that we can do, almost as a grassroots effort, to go ahead and get this going again? And, and talked amongst ourselves and talked with staff, talked with, with someone on council. And, you know, it, it is a large, very large task. And I'm sure you've been, and I know you've been involved in these, and I'm glad you're, you're part of, of this now and definitely want to have you as part of this going forward. Is to really bring that all together and do, hopefully do something that, that wasn't able to be done. Not only to, to help staff when it really comes down to it and make this a true usable document, but also then help the residents of Peachtree City, make it easier for them to go ahead and utilize this and understand what is out there. So really doing that. And then as part of that, you know, looking at what we have for the city centers and saying, and seeing what can we do to, you know, kind of bring some differentiation, bring some vitality maybe back into some of those where over the years, maybe some of that may have been lost. More so in, in certain ones than others. And, and what does that look like? Is it architectural differences? Is it signage? Is it a little bit of, of something different? Because really, we, we have the overlays, you know, the fifty-four west overlay, we have the avenue overlay. And, you know, we did a lot of work on, on the fifty-four west. And that was a lot of good work, but we knew there were pieces of that that we were still missing. And part of that was going to be part of this U D O originally. And now going back and saying, okay, well, here's our opportunity to, to take those items that we, we knew we had to do something with, but we weren't able to, and incorporate those across citywide. Whether that be car charging, whether that be golf cart charging, whether that be bicycle storage, whether that be, I mean, it was just a myriad of, of things kind of on a wish list that said, okay, we know we're gonna have to do something with this at some point in time. And we kind of looked at it and said, okay, well, the time is, is now. So let's go ahead and do it. So that's really what has been in, in work in the background. I think we were supposed to go in front of council September, then October. And now it's November twenty-first and I think we're, we're ready to go ahead and do that at this time. So if you have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out to Kenneth or myself. I know, like I said, Kenneth has, has done the bulk of, of the lifting on this. You know, him and I have discussed, but I know he's been really the, the point person in putting this presentation together. And I truly appreciate that from him. But again, any questions you may have, any comments with, with your experience in doing things like this in the past is very much appreciated and welcomed. So if you have anything, you know, as you kind of take a look at it over the next short period, definitely let us know if you see anything that, hey, you know, it's a good idea to, to do this or good idea to bring this up. So we can then go ahead and, like I said, lock it down for good going, going into the presentation in front of council.
Will do.
Okay. Anything else on that? No? Okay. And before we go ahead in the journ, next meeting twenty-eighth? Okay, good.
A lot of agenda items or just a few?
Both of, both of the public hearings are coming back.
Yeah, remember they got, they got pushed to the twenty-eighth, so the, well, one of them isn't actually a public hearing, but it's still a discussion. And then the Kmart S U P.
Okay.
And the, the two meetings in November are what days? So we can plan around the holiday.
It's the eleventh. Well, that's, that's right. That is Veterans Day and city, the city hall is closed. So we'll need, not, we will not have that one. And then the twenty-fifth would be the other November meeting. Yeah.
Should we make a motion to, to hold a meeting on a different, one meeting on a different day in November?
What we can do, and it, because it doesn't have to be a motion. What we can do is as we get closer to the twenty-fifth, so around the eleventh, we can see, because I don't think we have any public hearings for you guys that late in the year unless something. No, it wouldn't meet the require, the, the new requirement of advertising, right? Because, well, it could, yeah. We're, we're within that time limit.
For the twenty, twenty-fifth, you'd be able to, yeah.
So, yeah, so we could. So as we get closer to the, the eleventh, we'll know if we have any public hearing requests for the twenty-fifth. My recommendation would be if we don't have any public hearings, then we would, we would end up canceling that one. Or if we do, we would move it to a different day.
Yeah, I worry about a quorum. I, I won't be in town that week.
Okay.
Just everyone knows, but.
So if for some reason November doesn't happen, what's the first meeting date in December?
The ninth. And that would, so you're correct, that would be the only one.
Okay.
And I guess just staff, just let us know as soon as you know.
Yeah.
How things look.
Look to hear from us no later than the eleventh, probably closer to the eighth of November, whether or not a special called meeting is needed.
Thank you. Okay, anything else, staff? Anything else from the commissioners?
No.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.